Could you start us off with the prayer, please?
Absolutely. We can all bow our heads. Dear heavenly Father, thank you for the opportunity to be with family this week to honor. We'll just have honor and Memorial Day, the Memorial Day weekend. Yes, it was different. Things were definitely different, but we were able to pay tribute. Thank you for the frontline workers that have helped to keep us safe, our community. And thank you for Delaware County. I know we're all going through a lot of different things right now. Please just bless the county, bless our communities. We're in this together and let's just get through it. In your name we pray, amen.
Thank you, Ryan. The agenda was posted. We've talked to Denise and she's told us that it is posted, has also been advertised. I need an approval of the agenda.
I'll move to approve.
Motion from Jessica, second from Ryan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. And Steve, could you give us a roll call, please?
Say it again. Did he say Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Here.
Ms. Chambers.
She's probably still muted.
Ms. Chambers.
Ms. Lassiter.
Here.
Ms. Piper.
Here.
Mr. Quakenbush.
On line.
Mr. Alexander.
Here.
Mr. Hughes.
Here. We're in, guys. I need an approval of the minutes of April 28th and also the later meeting of April 28th.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion by Jane.
Second.
It was the second.
I got it.
I got Ron.
Second by Ron. Okay. Any discussion, changes, corrections? Okay, roll call, please. Steve?
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers. Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Here. And public comment from the can be made at county council, D I S T at C O dot Delaware dot I N dot U S. Again, any questions from the public can be made at county council, D I S T at C O dot Delaware dot I N dot U S. Okay, first on the agenda, we have a B H I bond ordinance. You guys were sent that ordinance that Bill prepared and Brad Bookout's here to explain that to us. Go ahead, Brad.
Good morning, Mr. President, members of council. It's a pleasure to be with all of you today, albeit alive. I'd like to start out and tell you that my wife is really happy that these meetings are on Zoom because it's forced us to clean off our countertop in the kitchen behind us. So, thank you for that. I was, joining us today is Peter Floria, Jacob Floria, and I believe their counsel, Mr. Burrows, as well as the county redevelopment commission's bond counsel Heather James and also Matt Eckerly from Baker Tilly, who's our financial consultant. I was fortunate to meet Peter a few months ago and he shared his vision to grow and expand the Balance Holdings Incorporated project and the Asaya system right here in Delaware County. Peter and his team are very entrepreneurial. They've got a good entrepreneurial spirit, which is exciting and I never am one to hold back anyone's entrepreneurial spirit. In fact, I always want to try to encourage those folks. So, some of you were able to join us for the Economic Development Commission meeting last Wednesday and hear about the project. Thank you for that. Some of you were also able to join us for the D C R C executive session last Thursday and then the plant commission also heard the project earlier this month. As some of you are aware, or if you don't know, or for the public's information, Balance Holdings plans to invest nearly eighteen million dollars in new buildings and equipment on thirty-three acres in Daleville, Indiana, along Interstate I sixty-nine, just north of the White Castle. They're currently occupying two offices of thirty-seven oh one and thirty-seven oh five North Briarwood, the intersection of Briarwood and Purdue Lanes. And they have hired to date thirty-four people in Delaware County, which we're really happy about. We're all aware of the importance not to risk, not to risk taxpayer money on startup projects and Peter and his team are also very cognizant of this fact. As a result, we've structured this bond in a way that provides good benefit to both parties, but at the same time protecting the taxpayers' dollars. So, here in just a second, I'm going to have Peter talk a little bit about the project and share with you what he's doing, kind of where they're at. I'd also like Heather James from Ice Miller to also share a little bit about the bond document and the document before you today for approval. What we're proposing or what is being proposed is roughly a two million dollar bond issuance that Balance Holdings Incorporated will provide the funds for upfront for the project. So, this is not funding provided for by Delaware County. It's funding provided for by the company. It is, however, repayable exclusively from tax revenue generated from the buildings that B H I plans to construct in Daleville at their development location. No other existing taxpayer monies are pledged for the project and no taxpayer backup is pledged for the project. As you can see from that, B H I is an incredible community partner. To date, we're excited to see their project progress and I'd like to turn it over to Peter. If Peter is your mic live, could you share a little bit with the county council about your project and where you're at?
Yeah.
Good morning, Jacob.
Good morning. So, in Daleville, we are, have the thirty-three acres. We're balance holding things. So, we have Asaya Technologies and the pharmacy platform. And Daleville will need a lot of the manufacturing work there. So, we'll be developing a hundred thousand square foot manufacturing building there and currently have a sixty thousand and forty-five thousand square foot buildings. Also, already lined up out there with L O I, with other manufacturing groups that we're working with. And what we'll be doing is developing a lot of the Asaya technology and our remediation product lines out there. We'll be doing a lot of contract work with outside groups that we are partnered with and working with. One of them is Smith and Wesson Group. Gun part manufacturing.
Jacob, could you share a little bit about the Asaya system and what that is? And how that has developed and what the intention is of selling that product, possibly nationally, possibly internationally?
Yeah, so Asaya Technologies is our division of the commercial regenerative agriculture growing systems and what they are, they are similar to aquaculture in that we use fish to raise plants in greenhouses through water troughs with water columns, twelve inch water columns, and they grow the most nutrient dense, the safest, the longest lasting and the best tasting produce on the planet so far on the market. That we use leading efficiency for all of that. So, we don't have water exchanges like any other growing system. We save a lot of grow area, replicating twenty-three acres of soil, row crop agriculture with one acre of Asaya technology. And our products work hand in hand with that technology. Make sure the plants are getting the most nutrients possible while we are growing them. So, it's all about efficiency in growing the safest, most nutrient dense produce out of that technology. So, then that product that is also grows in our system is a bio-organic, natural, biological that mediates hydrocarbons and at the source.
Thank you, Jacob. Heather, do you want to share a little bit about the document for approval today?
Sure. Thanks, Brad. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Good morning, everyone. So, just by way of background, I think you're all familiar with this structure, but in case you're not, the financing structure in Indiana that allows a governmental unit to issue bonds and provide the funds, the bond proceeds directly to a developer, it's under what we call the E D C statute, which is thirty-six seven twelve. And under that statute, the city issues the E D C bonds through the council upon the recommendation of the Economic Development Commission. And then the county's redevelopment commission pledges the T I F for the repayment of the bonds. So, before you today is the bond ordinance that sets forth all of the parameters for the bonds. So, you'll see in there the maximum maturity date, which is February first, twenty thirty-eight, the maximum par amount of the bonds, the interest rate, which is zero percent, and the payment dates and other parameters of that nature. And the other thing that the bond ordinance does that's important to all of you is it approves the substantially final form of the bond documents. And that would include the bond purchase agreement, which is the contract between the county and the developer as the bond purchaser that sets forth all of the final terms of the bonds because the ordinance goes through, again, maximum parameters. And then the financing and covenant agreement, which is the contract between the county and the developer that sets forth all of the covenants between those two parties. And then the trust indenture, which is the contract between the county and the bond trustee that includes the form of the bonds, outlines the specific mechanics of the deal, including the flow of funds, redemption provisions, and other things of that nature.
Thank you, Heather.
You're welcome.
We are open for questions.
Brad, let me, let me, let me get a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty zero zero five to introduce, excuse me, to introduce. And this is for introduction. I need a motion to introduce.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Jessica, second by, was that Ryan?
Yeah.
Right.
Okay, second by Ryan. Now, any discussion on that, any questions for Brad or Ron council or?
Do you have questions now or at the second reading? Which we hope.
If you have, if you have questions now, Ron, go ahead and ask them. I'm also going to ask Bill to, Bill has taken a look at this and prepared this for us if he has any concerns as well.
Hey, Brad, I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
Just for the public, how many of these jobs are, I guess, set aside for Delaware County residents and some of our community?
Yes, as we had talked about on a previous call, the company is absolutely wanting to give one hundred percent priority to Delaware County residents for hiring. Of course, in the event that we don't have folks who are able to fill all those positions, they will consider those from other positions as well, or other counties as well outside of Delaware County. The company also is working with some subject matter expertise outside of the state of Indiana, which they are relocating into Indiana now. A few of those people are on the ground now and homes have been purchased or rented in our community by those folks. So, we're happy about that as well.
Thank you.
Ryan.
Any other questions from council?
I have a couple if nobody else does.
Go for it, Ron.
Okay, on page four, I've talked to Mr. Hughes about this. What does the term financially final form encompass? How broad is that statement before the council would be brought back into this?
So, do you want me to take that?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, so substantially final form is a term of art under the statute, which, so I think really the intent there by the legislature is that when you go through this process to consider this ordinance, you know what the parameters of the terms of the deal could be and you're approving those maximum parameters. So, you know that you're only approving up to two point two million dollars worth of bonds. And you know that you're only approving a bond issue that would mature no later than February first, twenty twenty-eight. But they could be issued in a lesser amount and they could have a shorter term than that, right? But not longer without coming back to council and not greater than that without coming back to council. So, the bond documents that you're approving are, have already been sent to the developers team and their lawyers. They have reviewed them and had no major concerns with them. But there are things like the bond form within the trust indenture that you'll see has multiple blanks in it and that's as final as it can be at this date until we know a firm closing date and the deal is completely finally negotiated and we have all the final terms and that document and the bond purchase agreement. I use the form of the bond from the trust indenture to draft the actual bond. So, it's to give you a very clear idea of what the deal will look like when everything is finally executed, up to the amount of information that we have to date.
Okay, if the T I F revenue is underestimated, what happens if there's not revenue to pay these off in full?
So, the developer is purchasing the bonds. So, they are taking the risk that the T I F is sufficient to make those bond payments. If, for instance, when the trustee is collecting the funds semiannually, those dollars are not there, the developer simply does not get paid back for that payment.
Okay, thank you. Then if the bonds are fully paid in advance, what happens to the property tax in that T I F district? Does it go away? Does it go back to schools and other entities? Or what happens at the end of maturity with those T I F funds?
Yes, it would be captured in the redevelopment commission's allocation fund for the life of the area to be used for other projects.
Can there be stipulation in there that that doesn't happen?
It could, on an annual basis, there could be a determination made as to pass through if the redevelopment. So inclined.
And Ron, this is, this is Matt Eckerly from Baker Tilly. The redevelopment commission could also decide at the end of, you know, once the bonds are fully paid off, they could simply decide, we don't need this tip area anymore and eliminate it. Or as Heather said, they, during that annual pass through determination, they could maintain the flexibility to kind of re-capture those revenues on a go forward basis if a new project comes along, or they could simply pass it through until the area expires naturally. There's some flexibility in there.
Well, my problem is, is that eighteen years from now, or whatever the maturity date ends up being, it'll be a whole group, different group of people. And I'm just looking for a stipulation to go along with what I studied and remember way back years ago when planning in a community was to bring in new industry and new business to help relieve the tax rate on the citizens and bring jobs, of course. But with these T I F districts as such, we're gradually pulling tax dollars away from that concept. And I just wondered if there could be a stipulation in here that would put those tax dollars either back in the taxpayer's pocket or in the general tax base. That's my concept. That's my question. Can it be stipulated that those taxes don't go to some group eighteen years from now that we don't know?
Well, Matt, you can weigh in on this, but I think that the amount of T I F that is expected to be generated is the amount that's necessary to pay off the bonds and then the T I F area will expire shortly thereafter. Is that correct?
Um, yeah, you're correct in the sizing of the bonds that the T I F generated will, you know, will only go to pay off those bonds. What happens after the final maturity of the bond, given that the bonds have a shorter term than the legal life of the T I F area? I can't remember if in the documents there is that stipulation that the area automatically expires at the final maturity of the bonds. That's certainly, and Heather, correct me if I'm wrong, that's certainly something that could be put into those documents. And, you know, Brad and Joe can speak to, you know, from a policymaker standpoint from the redevelopment commission, if that's something that can be put in there. But I know I've seen that elsewhere, Ron, where there's kind of that automatic sunset of the T I F area. That doesn't mean that a future redevelopment commission or county council can't reverse that decision, but it certainly can be put in right now. We've seen that before.
So, I'd like to hear from my fellow council members, are they interested in having something put in there to that?
I'd go along with that, Ron.
Me as well.
I would too.
Agreed. Okay, can we, can we make that happen? For next month? Heather, Heather, could that change be made for next month?
It's not a legal question. It's more of a policy question for Brad and his team, I think.
About the policy of the people who are elected that control the taxes in this community?
Right, it's a redevelopment commission would have the control here on this particular issue. So, Brad, do you think it is the will of the redevelopment commission to make this change?
If that's what it takes to get the bond passed, so we can, I think the redevelopment commission's intention is to, with this, is to promote the B H I project. And I think we want, I think that commission wants to stay focused on that. So, if that's what it takes to get this bond passed, I think that's what needs to happen. I think that's what they would be supportive of.
Will you help him on that, Mr. Hughes?
Yeah, what I would suggest is that we, if the council wills it to introduce the ordinance as presented and then expect to see an amendment before second reading.
Although I don't know that, we could amend the ordinance if you'd like to make it clear, but I don't know that any actual amendment to this ordinance is necessary to make the change that you're requesting. We'd make a change to the redevelopment commission's T I F pledge resolution and that's really the relevant document that would need to be changed. But we could certainly add some language to the bond ordinance as well, if that makes you more comfortable.
I think, I think the council would want to speak its will and as a condition of approval of the ordinance.
Okay.
Take a motion on that?
We have a motion, we have a motion on the table to approve ordinance. Or it's twenty twenty dash zero zero five.
I'll second that.
It's already been seconded.
I'm sorry.
We have a motion on the table at this point. Motion and a second. And any other questions?
Scott, this is Commissioner King.
Yeah.
I'll take that back to the redevelopment commission, but I'm totally all right with Ron's suggestion. Our main concern is helping B H I and bring jobs and more tax revenue back to the county. So, Ron, I'm, I'm good with your suggestion.
I like that from a former president of the council. Thank you.
Yep, no problem, Ron.
Thanks, James.
Yep.
With your advice, should we go ahead and introduce this and make those changes for next month?
Can we ask Mr. Hughes how we should proceed?
That's what I'm asking right now.
Okay.
Yeah, my, my suggestion was to go ahead and introduce the ordinance as you have it in front of you. And then before the second reading, Heather and I will work on a, an amendment to the ordinance to include the sunsetting of the T I F district as, as the expression of the will of the council.
Any other questions from council?
Hey, Scott, real quick, maybe for Denise, once this goes through, which I assume it will here in the vote, would it, for people as are watching in the public, can, where will this be posted just as soon as possible? On our, our actual website, so people could view this?
Yeah, I can place it on the website.
Denise, Denise can place it on the website.
Okay, thank you, Denise.
Any other questions? Roll call, please. Steve?
Yes.
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 Bledsoe.
Yeah.
Yes. Keith. Okay, thank you. Brad, thank you and the redevelopment commission, the commissioners for all their work on this. We appreciate it and thank you for the company for considering Delaware County.
Thank you, council. Have a good day.
You too.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you, everyone.
Yes. Okay, we are on to the treasurer's report and the treasurer was not able to make it today. He suffered an injury, a minor injury that, that he's going to get taken care of, so. Steve, do you have anything on the collections as far as the percentage of collections that came in for?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Donnie, do you want to just go ahead and give that with your, your report?
Well, the only thing I can really say is I did an advanced draw on the twentieth, what the date of was last week. The advance was pretty close to last year's. The only thing is we went one day farther on collections to get to that point. Other than that, Ed was supposed to check and see what percentage versus last year we were at collection wise that we were at. But it looks like, last I talked to Tommy in the treasurer's office last Friday, it looks like we're going to be down about four to five million dollars on collections. And we're hoping that'll come in before the new July tenth deadline.
And Ed did send me a text message this morning that indicated that it was about, I think, a twelve point five to thirteen percent reduction in, in comparison to some other, other counties around. That is better than what was collected in some other counties around. So, that's actually probably good news. On that, any other questions on that for Donna?
Well, the date has been extended, hasn't it? Am I right?
Right, it's been extended till July the tenth. And so, any collections after May eleventh through July tenth, after we get that total, then I will do another advanced draw to all the units. And we're thinking it's probably going to be four to five million dollars. We're hoping it's going to be that amount.
Thanks, Doc.
Kind of like shooting at a moving target.
Right.
Anything else, Donna, at this point?
I think that's all I have.
All right. We've got a resolution. It's a change to the resolution or an amendment to the resolution, which will now be twenty twenty dash zero one five. And the change to that resolution would be to also exclude community corrections in that they have a position that is grant funded that needs to be addressed that we had previously excluded. What's the pleasure of the council on resolution twenty twenty dash zero? What's the pleasure of the council on Resolution 2020 dash zero one five?
I'll move. Move to approve Resolution 2020 dash zero one five as amended.
Second.
Okay, got a motion from Larry, second by Ryan. Any questions on this? Bill, do you want to indicate what those changes were again?
Again, all in section one of the resolution, we've added the last phrase, "and positions in community corrections which are grant funded." So those would be excluded from the hiring freeze.
Any questions from council?
This would exclude only those that are grant funded.
So you're saying just the grant funded positions?
Yes.
Okay, because I think this position is not a grant.
Okay, what Donna is telling us is this position's not grant funded?
If it's the position that I know about, I'm not real sure it's just grant funded. I mean, I'd have to, I'd have to find out, but.
What if we had amended that to include grant funded, grant funded or user fees? Or we could exclude, we could just exclude which are grant funded.
No, then they could get it out of the general fund.
Yeah, they're either funded by grants or user fees. This position, I'm not sure if her whole salary was paid from the grants or, because a lot of them, part of their salary is out of the grants, part of their salary is out of user fees. Some of them get paid out of three different funds. But if she is paid from funds other than just the grant, you're limited what portion of her salary is only paid out of the grants.
Okay.
What's Steve saying?
I've got the same text from Jane.
I just wanted to make sure you weren't limited per expenses.
Okay. Any other questions from council? Roll call please.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes. Okay, we are on to the transfer and financial agenda. If you want to start with the, yep. Yes, yeah. Yep. Steve's going to talk to you guys a little bit about, well, I'll let him explain it. Steve, go ahead.
The county received an email last week from the state of Indiana about some federal funds that would be available for each county and each city and town. That was, and Delaware County's amount that is available is around 3.7 million dollars. The townships are included in the county portion, the towns and the cities, they have their own money set aside. But this is for reimbursement for anything that is COVID virus related. And so what Scott and I had talked about before the meeting started is that we were going to try to have a department head meeting. And I'd rather stay on top of this than try to backtrack and figure out what we've spent money wise for each department. I think Jenny's keeping track of the commissioners' expenses, but we have a lot of other departments that have spent money also. I'd rather keep track of it and try to stay on top of this. So we're going to email the department heads and try to have a department head meeting. I'm going to send to them a copy that was sent to us from the state about what is eligible to be reimbursed. And then that way they can start tracking some of their expenses. And it's going to take all the departments working together to try to maximize to get this money returned to Delaware County. So I just want to get that there, I want to give council a heads up that there is funds available that we can try to recover some of our expenses during this COVID virus. And as we go forward, I'll keep the council abreast of what we're doing.
Thank you.
There are timetables on that, Steve, like windows of operation and deadline for filing?
I believe that we have till December 31st to file for everything. But like Donna and I talked about, we get so many claims into our office, we probably get a thousand a month. It's too hard to backtrack and go through. You're going to have to do it by vendor and what was made. It's easier to try to stay out in front of it. And I don't want that people double charge in the state, you know, like EMS submitting something and then the auditor submitting the same bill again. So it's better to have one contact. And all the monies, it makes sense to have it through the auditor because, one, that's where your finances go. And whatever's returned is going to come there anyway. And so we're just trying to stay on top of it. I know that commissioners are staying on top of it. They signed the paperwork that is sent back that we would be participating in trying to recover some funds. And so it's just going to take everybody working together to try to maximize what we're going to get back from the state. And the townships have to go through the county. But every other town and city has their own money set aside that they're going to have to pursue themselves.
Can I ask Mr. Hughes a question?
Go ahead, Ron.
Would it be proper to have a joint resolution from the commissioners and the council president with support of each body to give the auditor this this burden, I guess we would call it, this responsibility? And then, and reiterate what Steve has just said?
Yeah, I certainly think that would be appropriate. I don't, I'm not familiar with the program, so I don't know what is actually necessary in order to authorize filing of the claim. But there's certainly nothing wrong with expressing the wishes of the council in that regard. And the commissioners.
You missed a view, a copy of what I've got, so you can review it.
Very good. I'll look at it. You bet.
Everybody okay with that?
Everybody, all the council members okay with that?
Yep.
Bill, could you go ahead and work on that and maybe work with the commissioners too as well? Commissioners attorney as well and see if we can't get a joint resolution between commissioners and council on that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I think we're ready for you Donna on the transfers.
The first transfer for the county court has been withdrawn. So we'll move on to public defender's office, attorney fees. Account 186 minus 25,000. Contract counsel, count 312, plus 25,000. Total request zero.
I'll move to approve.
Motion from Jessica, second from, was that Ron?
Yeah.
Okay. Any discussion on that? Roll call please.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
J L, E 132 minus 19,500. E 132 plus 19,500. Total request zero.
Approve.
Okay, got a motion from Jessica, second from Larry Bledsoe. Any discussion on that? Roll call please.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
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 Okay, jail lit public safety, A 114 minus 22,96140. B 114 plus 22,96140. Total request zero.
It's lit now. I need a motion to approve that.
I moved to approve and Ryan seconded.
Okay, got a motion from Jessica, second from Ryan. Any discussion? Roll call please.
I can't hear Steve.
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes. Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Alexander.
Yes.
Community corrections, C 115 minus 19,97254. B 115 plus 19,97254. Total request zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion from Jessica, second from?
Ron.
Ron, okay. Any discussion? Roll call please.
Yeah.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter. Ms. Piper. Mr. Quaycon Bush.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Alexander.
Yes.
Okay, the transfer addendum, commissioners, has been withdrawn. Moving down to EMS. E 138, I have a change that is now minus 10,952.36. So it would be F 138 plus 10,952.36. Total request zero.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Jessica, second from Larry.
Correct.
Any discussion on that? Roll call please.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quaycon Bush.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Alexander.
Yes.
Highway FICA 171 minus 38,000. Unemployment 175 plus 38,000. Total request zero.
You want to do, go ahead and do the next one as well.
Kew bridge, FICA 171 minus 15,000. Unemployment 175 plus 15,000. Total request zero.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion from Jane, second from?
Jessica.
Jessica, okay. These are both transfers. Several of them took the, out at the highway and the bridge took the furlough and they're moving some funds into unemployment. Any questions? Roll call please, Steve.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Alexander.
Yes.
Okay, on the financial agenda, I did not send out a financial report because all of these are COVID-19 grants from either Ball Foundation or Community Foundation. And that the request before you is exactly the amount of money each one of these funds got. So can I read them all together?
Yes.
So adult probation, 441, equipment 2,000. Coroner, 211, supplies 2,000. EMA, 211, supplies 14,000. EMS, 211, supplies 5,000. Sheriff, 211, supplies 10,000.
I'll move to approve.
Thank you.
Motion from Jessica, I didn't hear that second.
Ron.
Ron, from Ron, second from Ron. Any discussion?
My bedroom office.
Any discussion on those?
Yes, this is, I'd already read this. It's what prompted me to ask for that resolution because this is a perfect place where someone could, we'll say accidentally, apply twice for these funds. That's why we need one department to look over all these requests to the state.
These, these are, these were upfront grants around.
I understand, but they shouldn't be able to apply for this same amount of money from the state program that they've already gotten from these grants. There could be some of that happening.
I guess, I don't understand why, I mean, this is a local grant versus we were always going to need some sort of PPE supplies and I don't understand why you would just not do that, just with somebody local, if there is a possibility for federal monies.
If you turned it in and got caught double dipping, you might lose the whole mess too.
It's not double dipping, no. This is totally separate from what?
You're not getting my point, Larry. I'm just saying that whatever these funds replace, we shouldn't ask for them again from the state program.
I don't look at it as a replacement. I look at it that these were funds that were immediately available for us to buy, to buy our PPEs and things that we need.
I think Ron's point is that these funds are not reimbursable by this federal money. This is not county tax dollars. This is actually grant money that was given to the county. So I think he's just saying, he wants to make sure that we're not submitting things twice or in error to the state to try to get some of the funds that are available to us.
Do you agree with that, Ron?
Well, yeah, he said it better than I did.
Okay.
I just don't want to jeopardize our application to the state by maybe something that's duplicated and then somebody says, oh, you've got 10,000 here for something that you already got money from somebody else from.
Well, I think with the demand on all these supplies, it's very helpful from Ball Brothers and the Community Foundation to have this money available. I mean, the cost of these supplies is going up and they have been harder to get. They seem to be a little bit easier to get now if you're willing to pay for them. But we do certainly appreciate any help we can get on it. Roll call, Steve?
Yes.
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 Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Alexander.
Yes. Okay, and we are ready for the motion for the transfer and financial agenda.
Our motion to approve financial transfers and to amend salary ordinance with like reductions.
Second.
Got a motion for a second, or a motion from Jessica, second from Ryan. Roll call please. Roll call, please.
Yes.
Ballard. Mr. Ballard.
Yes, sir, yes.
Mr. Bledsoe. Miss Chambers.
Yes.
Miss Lassiter.
Yes.
Miss Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes. We are on to committee appointments down here. We've got one, I sent out an email to all the council members concerning the Economic Development Board or economic, excuse me, economic, Economic Development Commission nomination. There was also a, an email sent out to you guys concerning this. At the time, I asked if it would be okay to, to put Jessica Piper on that board and she has met with them at this point, but we need to make that nomination official. So if I could get a nomination for Jessica Piper for the Economic Development Commission.
I nominate Jessica.
Second.
Okay, that was a motion by Jane, second by Ryan.
Yep.
Yes, sir.
Is that correct? Okay. Any discussion on that? Roll call, please.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
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 Miss Lassiter.
Yes.
Miss Piper.
Stane.
It's Quake.
Um, yeah, okay, yes.
Alexander.
Yes. The second one I've got on the agenda here is the Yorktown Economic Development Commission and that was a request made by Pete Olson. They're starting a economic, this is a new economic development board in Yorktown and had requested a previous member and or Ryan Ballard on there. I've talked to Ryan, he's interested in that. I would entertain a motion to approve Ryan Ballard for that spot on the Yorktown Economic Development Commission.
I moved.
Second.
Motion by Jessica, second by Larry. Any discussion on that?
Yeah, I'm wondering why Pete didn't ask for me.
We have to call Pete on that.
I know why Pete didn't ask for me.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Miss Chambers.
Yes.
Miss Lassiter.
Yes.
Miss Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quake.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Stane.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes. Okay, the Muncie Library Board, after some work and, and searching, Denise and I have figured out that uh, there were two names submitted there, they would like to reappoint. These are currently board members that are already on there, would like to serve another term and that would be Billy Shepherd and Royce Mitchell on there. Royce's, we were, we didn't know for sure, we had some dates on that one that weren't correct, but we've got the proper paperwork in, in place and those are both up for reappointment, so I would need a motion to approve.
To move.
Second.
Okay, got a motion from Ron, second from Ryan.
What, what is that?
Any discussion?
Yeah, do you know the term? I've forgotten.
Pardon me, Ron?
The length of term, I forgot.
Oh, their term is, is a four-year term and it's up on June the first.
Okay, thank you.
I think is what I have here. Yeah, that would be a four-year term beginning June the first, 2020.
Okay, I think that needs to be in the record, that's why I asked. You know how confusing that gets, Scott.
Yep. Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Miss Chambers.
Yes.
Miss Lassiter.
Yes.
Miss Piper.
Yes.
Quake.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes. All right, and two more for the Civic Center Authority. Those don't expire until eight one, but the, the responsibilities of those members are to vote for the budget and vote for officers at the first meeting, so we like to, or in the past few times, we've tried to appoint those early. And I would request that we reappoint Mary Ann Cradville and Jessica Piper. Donna has indicated that she's, she's ready for a leave on that one.
Because she's had new responsibilities added, too.
I'll tell you all white labor.
So I.
Gee, thanks.
So I need, I need a motion for
I move.
Cradville and Jessica Piper.
Second.
Got a motion from Jane, second from Ryan.
Yes, sir.
And you have the terms on those? Eight one, they start eight one. Hang on just a minute and I'll give you the term.
It's two-year term.
Two-year term. Any other questions from council on that? Roll call, please.
Miss Lassiter.
Yes.
Miss Piper.
Stane.
Mr. Quake.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yeah.
Miss Chambers.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes. Okay, any other, any other new business from council?
Only that.
Is Jason Rogers out there?
I would like to thank my fellow council members for stepping up to some of these positions. I really appreciate that. We need new faces and new ideas.
Okay, no other, I don't, I don't, I don't think we have any other new business, so any comments from council?
I would like to make a comment. Last night on Fox fifty-nine, there was a nice article about the big time barbell and what they've been doing during, during this this virus. It was a very positive article and I felt very proud that Delaware County and also supports that.
I saw that, too, Jane.
I saw it this morning, it was on the news again.
Anybody else?
I guess I have one thing, I've brought this up at other meetings as well, but the Indiana Blood Bank or Versity, I guess is what it's called now, are still looking for donors, so if you're able to donate blood, there's still a high demand, so if you could donate, please do. The donation bus is located over near Outback Steakhouse on Saturdays and Mondays, so you can sign up online and schedule your time to donate. So if you're available to do so, that would be appreciated.
Scott, I do have one question, or actually for Denise, didn't we at the last Zoom meeting, didn't we have to have for our electronic signatures or what, we need anything for that?
That's on my list, actually, before we close out, I got one, one or two more things, but go ahead. If you'd like, we can go ahead and do that now. Is it, is everybody okay with the, the e-signatures?
Yes.
Yes.
Let me, let me do a roll call and, and I just need you to, to vote yes on that, if you're okay with the e-signatures. Go ahead, Steve, if you want to do a roll call on that for the, this is for e-signatures on all the documents that were approved today.
Miss Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quake.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Miss Chambers.
Yes.
Miss Lassiter.
Yes.
Alexander.
Yes. How about, Donna, did you have anything on the, is there any update on the, the fair, on how, what's going on with that, or do you?
Well, just the fair's been postponed until next year, basically.
And the four-H part, are they still working on that?
They're still working on the four-H, they're still trying to get everything together that Purdue has requested. So right now, they're still working on trying to still have parts of the four-H, I'll say, and some of it's going to be virtual, some of it will be on the grounds if everything gets worked out.
Okay, and then Donna, you had asked me about dates for budget.
I need to I need to have the dates for the budget hearings. We've been starting on Wednesday after Labor Day, Labor Day's basically a week later this year. If we start on Wednesday after Labor Day. I think it's like.
The ninth.
Maybe. Denise is looking it up.
It would be the ninth and tenth.
Okay, so Wednesday, the ninth, and my suggestion to Scott was since it, we're starting almost a week later with Labor Day being almost a week later, that we don't adopt at your council meeting, break your monthly council meeting in September just because of everything we're going to be faced with. I don't know, unless you guys think you can get it done, I think it'd be kind of a rush to try to get it done by your regular meeting in September, so I suggested to wait until the first or second week in October to meet, to adopt.
Can we have it the first Monday in September rather than after Labor Day?
Yeah. That, that'd be fine, too.
Anybody?
I couldn't hear you, Ron.
I said, why couldn't we have it the first Monday in September?
Well, the first Monday in September is not till the fourteenth.
Oh, well.
Yeah, the first day in September is Tuesday, the first.
Okay, that's the day I'm looking for, I don't have a calendar.
That's fine.
Tuesday, the first, what about that?
I can do that as well. First and second, is that what we're looking at then, tentatively?
Probably, yeah.
Yeah, we would, we would schedule department head hearings on the first and second, just like last year.
Okay, that's fine.
And then you'll meet after that, whenever, so if you, what date are you wanting to adopt on?
That's kind of up to you, you're the one that has to do all the work.
Donna, do you think we, we should not have it on our September meeting and have?
Well, since you're starting a week earlier, what days, what day is the September council meeting?
Why don't we just adopt on that day then, again, we're starting a week earlier and then it's something, I mean.
Oh, wow, so the, I have the council meeting down for the twenty-second.
Why is there, is there five Thursdays or five Tuesdays in the month?
Yes.
Yeah, there's, there's five Tuesdays in September, so you would be, you can adopt on the twenty-second, as long as you all feel like that's plenty of time.
I think if we're, if we're going to meet on the second, then I think we can probably still adopt on the, on the twenty-second. I mean, we're, all of us have done this before and we're going to get down to work and, and get it, get the job done.
Yeah, we're not going to play around with it.
Is that okay with everybody?
Yes.
Yes.
That work with you, Donna, is that going to give you enough time? Okay.
Stay a little later some nights.
Yeah, I think this will, I mean, this, this budget's going to require more time than the, than the last two years, so I think everybody's aware of that. If that's okay with everybody, we'll go ahead and go with those dates. Those could be changed if they had to be, is that correct, Donna? They're necessarily set in stone, but that's the dates you're going to.
They're not set in stone until I get ready to advertise it, which I won't advertise until first of August, so.
Okay, everybody okay with starting on the second then?
Yep.
Did you say first and second or second?
The first, I'm sorry.
It was a first and second.
It's the first, first and second.
And do you want to start it, just, you help me do the schedule just like I did last year?
Yes.
Hey, that, that's all I need, except I need, Scott, if you're going to have me send out a letter to the departments about the budgets, I'm already getting people have already started on their budgets and they're going to question me. I told them to wait till after this meeting and.
Yep, we'll go over that, we'll go over that right after, right after we get done with this meeting. Yep.
That's all I have.
Anything else from council? If not, I need a.
I wanted to ask a question.
Okay.
Uh, are, have you come to any conclusions on what we're going to do about shortfalls if, if we find out how much they are? I know you and I have talked about it, I just wonder if you want to fill the council in on anything.
As, as of right now, I don't think there are any, any firm numbers from auditor's office, you guys haven't, haven't got any firm numbers. I think we all know that, that all of our revenue funds are going to be affected negatively coming into this next six months and, and into next year's, next year's budget, so it is something that we're going to have to address. At the same, same time, I want to, Donna and I are going to talk about giving some budget guidance to the department heads and Steve's working on getting a meeting that will address the the reimbursement and also, also the guidance for department heads as well. Anything else?
No.
Okay. Are we ready to close this meeting and not meet until June, or do we want to recess it?
Recess. I moved recess, how about that?
Okay, I've got a motion from Ryan to recess.
Second.
Second from Ron?
Yeah.
Was that Ron?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Quake.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Miss Chambers.
Yes.
Miss Lassiter.
Yes.
Miss Piper.
Yes.
Alexander.
Yes.
I like recess, where are we playing?
Thank you, guys, we had some technical difficulties we had to deal with at the start, but I, I appreciate all your patience and input today.